For me to lead it tonight, so I'm gonna do that. So we'll call the meeting to order at 6:01, and if we could, start by, pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I think we do have a student council report this evening.
Mr. David Habib's on his way up.
Mr. Habib.
Hi, this is David from student council. I'm in fifth grade in Miss O'Kane's class. Gather is a pantry for people who can't afford groceries. Student council hosted a bake sale. We earned $382.72. All of the money we earned, we can take to Market Basket to shop for items before we deliver to Gather. Also, the winner for collecting the most items for the grade level will have a hot chocolate popcorn party and movie in the learning comments at the end of February break. We announced today that third grade won, that fourth grade won. At the fifth, at this showcase, fifth graders had a cultural heritage museum in the gym. The first graders were talking about perspective. Kindergarten had a musical performance. Third grade explored changemakers and people that changed the world. Thank you all parents for participating in the showcase. The polar challenge has been going on for a long time. We thank all of the parents that volunteered for the polar challenge and thank new teachers for organizing it. We were lucky to have a snow, to have snow. My favorite part was the station called Maple Syrup. It was a word game. Have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you, David. I have a question for you, David. Do you think we'll have school tomorrow?
Um. Fifty-fifty.
Fifty-fifty? All right. Thank you for that.
Thank you, David.
Any, any other questions or feedback for our student council?
Thank you. The pictures were awesome. It looked like a really fun event.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the Gather, I think that's all the stuff out there that we walked by, right? Yeah, it's a ton, so it's awesome.
On both sides.
Yeah, that's great. All right, thank you for that. We, we have the opportunity to be able to do public comment and even split it up potentially because we do have a, we do have a presentation as part of the agenda. One of the, one of the items on that, just before I move to the minutes, is we have a presentation from Ms. Lizier, I believe, our curriculum coordinator, on the New Hampshire statewide assessment system scoring criteria. It may be something that folks want to add, offer comment on after that presentation. So, do we have anybody that would like to do public comment prior to that? Otherwise, we can open it up after, after that. All right, seeing no takers, we will open up public comment after that presentation, if that's okay. That work? All right. And then I think the next item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Do we have a motion, first of all, on the, on the, I guess it's, we could do, we just have public minutes, I think. Is that correct? Yep. Do we have a motion to approve public minutes?
I can, this is Sophie, I can make a motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion or corrections on the, on the minutes?
They looked good to me.
I wanted to note one thing. I don't, Heidi was not on page, I guess it was like the second page of the minutes. It indicated that Heidi was in attendance, and I don't think she was in attendance. So, I know she did kind of give a proxy vote, but she wasn't there, so I think that's probably worth amending. Anything else?
I think they were really well done.
All right, so could we have a vote to approve?
One question for that, Eric.
Yes, sir.
Would you like me to have that change reflect gave a proxy vote? Because she did give a vote from the, from the fact, but it was, was, she was not in attendance, so if I put proxy vote, is everyone?
I think that adds some clarity to it.
Well, they had voted at a previous meeting, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, whatever thing is the most clear.
Thank you, I think that clarifies it.
All right, so should we actually, I guess, vote on the amended minutes, just including the correction that Heidi wasn't present for that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. opposed? Got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. And I think we are on to the manifest and financials.
Great, so there's a bunch of manifests right in front of Jennifer. There's also two other documents in front of her, the warrant and the MS-26. So the warrant has all your warrant articles, starting with the bond, then the operating budget, trust funds, and then the two additional warrants that Stratum always has for business purposes. So if each of you could sign those documents, we are gonna get those posted. I put a posting date of Friday, the deadline's actually this coming Monday, so we're gonna post it in advance. And in all districts, I always send it to the school, the town office, and the library. So it's posted in three places.
Okay.
So once we have the signatures, I'll scan those and get those posted tomorrow. And then also included in your board pack was a current year financial. We had just some ups and downs, and the big change was, if you remember when Michelle Larson was here in my place, because I was at a different board meeting, we had, I believe Michelle had mentioned last month, there was identified a duplicate special ed purchase order, so that has now been removed, so that is the large negative that you see in there. Did anyone have any questions on any of these items? So great, that's everything I had, so if you just want to keep signing and then pass them back this way, then that'd be awesome.
All right, great, sorry, scrolling back to the agenda. I think we're up for the SMS administrative report, and perhaps this is the opportunity, Ms. Lizier?
Yeah, so I'd like to bring up our chief officer for curriculum instruction and assessment, Jill Lizier. From our board meeting last time, there were some questions, so I asked Jill with the work of the administration to kind of give how our New Hampshire SAS has scored, what goes into it, and other factors in our scoring, as well what grade levels and what tests they have, just so you have all the factual information that she works with through all of our schools. So, thank you, Jill, and mic is yours.
Hello? All right, hi, thanks for having me. I have, I'm, like Chris said, I'm Jill. I work in all of our schools, K through 12. I've seen you at some of the joint board meetings, and when Dr. Andruski asked me to come and talk about state assessment, I got very overwhelmed because there's so much involved with it, and obviously, it's my wheelhouse, right? Like, it's something that I spend a lot of time with in our schools. It's something that I go to a lot of statewide meetings about, so I'm trying to give an overview that would be relatable to what you're looking for, and if I'm not reaching something, please either ask a question now or reach out to me later. But I'm just giving you an overview of, I switched the words around on purpose, but the why and the what of New Hampshire state assessment. So, I think a really key thing that I want this board to understand, and everyone, is that the reason we do state assessments is for the federal accountability system. The federal government says we have to have some sort of way to hold our public and charter schools accountable, and a part of that is the assessment that we have students do, and with that piece, we have to set goals as a state. So the state has put together what they would want our proficiency scores to be throughout the, throughout the years. And you can't see it right here, but if you ever are interested, you would look on the New Hampshire Department of Education website, and they list their federal, how we are, as New Hampshire, are meeting the federal accountability system. So, federal government says you need to do this, the state comes up with the plan, the federal government accepts the plan, and then public schools have to meet what the state has determined. The purpose of doing the state assessment is to find schools that need improvement. And so I want to highlight and make sure it's known that we don't have a school in SAU-16 that has been identified as in need of improvement based off of the federal accountability system, okay? So we still do it, but we are not in need of improvement. All right, so, part of that accountability is achievement scores. Some of it is graduation rate, some of it is what students are college and career ready. So today, at the Stratum board meeting, I'm gonna talk about the assessments that we take for those achievement scores. So this would be the most relatable to the students that you're serving, okay? So, all students in grades three through eight participate in New Hampshire SAS, ELA in math. ELA is reading and writing. Five and 11 participate in science, grades five and 11. Grade 11 participate in the SAT. So those are the ways, New Hampshire has said, this is how we'll measure achievement, and this is what we will submit for our state plan for the federal government. Students with significant disabilities still need to participate in state testing, so we still have to say, how are we going to measure the achievement of these students? We have, there's a 1% cap on the students that can take an alternative assessment, and that's called the Dynamic Learning Maps, DLM, and that's decided by an IEP team. And so if your population in your building exceeds that 1% of students that take the DLM, you have to get permission from the state to do that, and we haven't done that here at Stratum. And lastly, the other part of the assessment system is access testing, and those are for our English language learners. Any questions so far? Another piece is our communication to families, and so we send this out. I do it, we do it on our website, but we have to do it at the beginning of testing season. And so we want to be very clear, and we want to let everyone know that we're participating in the state assessments, and here's the, the date range, and here are the tests that we're doing, just to let caregivers know. So, because this is a learning session, there's a 16-minute video that I'm not gonna have you watch the whole thing, but I want to have you hear some of this. This is from the Department of Education. So I will skip around to the important parts, is that okay with you guys? Okay. Okay.
Welcome to Accountability 101, overview of the federal accountability system in New Hampshire as required by the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESA. ESA requires states to implement a federal accountability system to measure academic progress of students and identify schools in need of the most support. This training will go over key components of the federal accountability system in New Hampshire, as well as available support and next steps for schools and districts. We'll first review the ESA requirements pertinent to federal accountability, followed by updates for fall 2024. We'll then discuss the specific components of the federal accountability system and 2024 exit criteria, and end with support and next steps for schools and districts. Let's first review the ESA requirements. Per Section 1011C and H of the Every Student Succeeds Act, states must develop a statewide accountability system that carries out various requirements, including the following. Develop long-term goals, including measurements of interim progress toward meeting such goals for all students and subgroups. Measure certain indicators, including proficiency on annual assessments, growth for elementary and middle school, graduation rate for high school, progress towards English language proficiency, and school quality and student success. The accountability system must also identify schools CSI, ATSI, and TSI needing the most support. They must also publicly report accountability data through the State Report Committee.
Okay, I'm gonna skip ahead, but I, the biggest thing that I want you to take from that is, the purpose of our state accountability system is to identify schools in need of support based off of those indicators that they chose. And the ones that we're talking about here at elementary school are specifically the achievement ones, because we aren't concentrated on graduation rates right now. And as mentioned before, we, Stratum and the other schools in SAU-16, aren't identified as a school in need of support, and if we were, there would be further conversations with the state on how we're going to improve our scores. So, we are really focused, at elementary school, on the achievement part of the state accountability system. All right, so, the achievement part of the state accountability system means taking this end-of-the-year summative assessment. With that, we have to allow, the state allows parents to opt-out. So I'm gonna have you hear from the Department of Ed of what that means, and then I'll talk about it a little bit more.
Review the federal 95% rule. The U.S. Department of Education mandates that 95% of students required to test must participate in summative assessments. The only federally approved exceptions are the medical exception and the recently arrived EL exception for one administration of ELA testing. Any other non-participants not federally approved who fall below the 95% threshold count against a school's achievement indicator score only. Parent opt-outs are not federally approved and must become non-participants. Let's review some examples of how the 95% rule is calculated for accountability. Example one, out of 100 students, three students were parent opt-outs. The three students will not count against the school's achievement indicator score. Example two, out of 100 students, seven students were parent opt-outs. Two students will count against the school's achievement indicator score.
If you're ever interested in watching the full 16 minutes, I can always share that with you. I've watched it many times. Okay? This is just an in-ring form. So this is what I want to point out. So what does that mean for Stratum Memorial School? Take a look at our participation rate, if you can see that. I can see it, and we're about 98%, 98%, 99% participation. So that means we didn't fall below that 95%, so we didn't have any zeros counting against us. So what that means, so think about that, so we had no zeros in our achievement score, and we talked about students that take that alternate assessment, the DLM, that's a really small amount, no more than 1% of your population. So we have all of our students, and we should be, really be proud of that, participating in the state assessment. Also, that means we assess any student that comes into our building, even if they moved from another school, it could be a fourth grade student reading on a second grade reading level, they still are participating in this. So, that can really be tricky to know exactly where a student is, because it's a state assessment, it happens in the spring, we don't get the results until right after, so schools are like, all right, we care about this, we care about the state assessment, but we don't want to wait until the end of the year to see how a student's performing. We also know that since it's one assessment, and it's on, it's a grade level assessment, and a student could be reading below grade level, could have anxiety, could be having a bad day, we need to have other ways to measure student progress. And Stratum is doing an excellent job at that this year, and past years, but this is only my second year. I'm, I admire the structures that they have in place right now, so we don't have to wait until June to find out, what does this student know? Because that's too late. So... Oh yeah, I put this up here too, before I go into that. This is our federal accountability. We're in good standing, which means we are not in need of support. Additionally, we have no subgroups of our population that are in need of support. And that is the purpose of state testing, is to determine that. So let's keep that in mind.
Jill, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What is the threshold or trigger for good standing?
So, they take...
What percentage?
I can't give you an exact percentage, because it's in that six, that 16-minute video, but what they do is they take a look at achievement score, they take a look at growth, and they take a look at equity, which I believe means your subgroups and how your subgroups are performing. They look at the scores from that, and then they rate it one through four. So we're a three, which means we're in good standing. I'd have to dig into it a little bit more, if you'd like me to, I definitely can send you that.
Thanks.
So, because this is a June assessment, that's measuring, and it's a summative, which means it's kind of taking all of our state standards that we have to follow, and putting it into reading, writing, math, and science, we want to have assessments throughout the year that measure the same thing. So, we have structured teams that look at data throughout the year that are aligned to the same standards, so that what we're working on through the year will essentially affect that summative assessment at the end of the year in a positive way, because we're measuring similar skills. So in the fall, we have I-ready math and ELA. We have a assessment called Acadians, which gets down to some foundational skills for reading. And then we also have curriculum-based assessments that are aligned to state standards, because the end-of-year test is aligned to state standards. So I'll let you take a look at that, and I catch, I'll catch my breath. So, you can see, in the spring, it's the same, but we have New Hampshire SAS right at the end. And so we do look at it, it's helpful to know, it's measured against state standards, but we really shouldn't see any surprises, because we are monitoring student growth along the way, and if we do see a surprise, we might know it's because of some external factor, that really, it's hard to control in a student that is six, seven, well, not six, seven, eight, nine, 10. They're sick, they're absent, they went on vacation, they came back, they had to take the test, they just moved in. There's lots of different reasons, so we need to have a balanced system. Any questions for this? I'm almost done. So I threw a couple slides in at the end, because I wanted to do some celebrations. I already said this piece. Okay. This is a part of our MTSS system, and if you look here, this can't be, this is assessment we took right now, we know it can't, it can't be state assessment, because that's not till the June, till June, so this is our I-ready winter math assessment. I decided to do all of SAU-16 up here, so it says district, but this is all of our schools. So in first grade, we're above the New Hampshire average and the national norms. In second grade, third, fourth, and fifth. In reading, it's very similar. So SAU-16's on the right, and then you go to the left, and you'll see New Hampshire, and then you'll see national year-to-date, and then you'll see national norms. So these are all schools that are taking the same assessment compared to our SAU-16 students. So I think it's something to celebrate, and it also helps us decide, when we look at this on a school-based level, who do we need to talk about that needs a little bit more support to get to that end-of-year grade-level expectation? So, that's what I got. Do we do questions? Do we want?
Well, I was wondering, could we do, maybe we could start public comment, just so we, because we do need to open it for 30 minutes, so I feel like it's probably where the night gets on. Do we have anybody that would like to speak at public comment?
Hold on, let me give you the microphone. Whoever wants to do that.
Hi, I'm Patrick Quinn, to Lambington Place. Recently, I've noticed a lot of posts on the Stratum Talks Facebook page with charts about SMS's proficiency ratings, and I was surprised that one person went all, way out of their way to develop a couple selective data presentations, that's what I call them, that share two things. One is that there are some New Hampshire towns that are, that had better proficiency scores than we do. And also, by employing some statistical gymnastics, you can make SMS proficiency levels look worse than they are. The only thing I, in my opinion, these posts and graphs really show is how desperate some people are to portray Stratum's elementary school, the students, in the worst possible Why should someone want to do this? Maybe it's because it's easier to campaign for cutting school budget if people around town believe the school is not well-regarded. The board, as a steward of SMS, voted last meeting to cut $111,000 further. So SMS will have one less teacher. The average taxpayer will save, save $20 on their tax bill. If that, if that budget passes next month, we can all go down to the 110 grill, you'd be able to get two cocktails for the price of that teacher. A board member spoke at the last meeting about their interactions with parents, and I quote, "There are all these parents coming up, saying that SMS is a great school. Well, I don't see it. Imagine dismissing parents of SMSers as not knowing how great the school is, while some of the board's only interaction with the school only involves enacting fiscal discipline. Call me a tax-and-spender. I'm a taxpayer, I'm a homeowner. I've been here for 21 years in Stratum as a homeowner, so why am I speaking tonight?" It's the same reason why I've spoken at many school boards, including when my own kids went here, and people revolted over the costs of SMS to the town. I want to remind people to the fact that these budget battles do not take place in a vacuum. Someone mentioned that SMS is considered a B-school, insinuating that people won't be, it won't attract people to move to this town, when in fact, if NISH, it gives it a B-plus, academics and teachers get an A. Well, an article will be written about this board and this budget. Headlines will be, "The Town Is Fighting Against the School Budget. The School Board Is Recommending Less Teachers." That's gonna dissuade families from moving here, probably, perhaps, make some residents and families consider moving. In my opinion, you've created the appearance of failure where there is none.
Any other public comment?
Hi, Cameron Norris, Six Shandre. So, I just wanted to provide comment, because we didn't have comment session after the last meeting with the financial committee, and I just did want to say publicly that, as you're all aware, we did a lot of analysis on the budget, and it was disappointing that a month, or a month and a half of analysis got boiled down to a decision that was made in two or three minutes. So, I know we've all heard that, but I just want to say that, you know, we all felt like we did a real good job looking at the budget. It originally started out over 5%. That seemed to be forgotten. Folks had a 2% target, that seemed like that predated any of the work that we did or anyone else. So I was very disappointed to hear, you know, that was just passed with no concern for the impact, because we did weeks and weeks of analysis. I did want to clarify one thing also, I'm not exactly sure how it sorted out with the meeting notes, but the fact that, I think, I heard the superintendent make the comment that the meeting where we voted, the four to one, for the recommendation, actually occurred previous to that, so I, I mean, I don't know if the notes said that Heidi was here, and I think that's what the correction was, but I just wanted to put, the vote was not relevant, the fact that she wasn't here. And I did want to ask, and I know this is not, this is just a general question to the presenter, about the other two testing sessions, the spring and the winter, that is purely for... about the other two testing sessions, the spring and the winter, that is purely for preparation for the final testing session, or that's part of data gathering? I'm just trying to understand, you know what I mean? Like what the purpose is? Thank you.
Give me just one more moment here. Cameron, do you have anything else on public comment?
No, that was going to be it.
Is there any other public comment? And then I think the board can offer that question to you.
My name is Andrea Alhelfen-Zurumba, and I resided at A. Paulson Way with my husband and our children. After reviewing the last meeting, I was feeling very impassioned. I wrote something. I wasn't sure if I was going to read it tonight, but I was inspired by Pat, so here we are. And I'm going to read this quickly so I don't take up too much time. I would like to start by saying thank you to the chair, Jen Scrafford, who I'm so appreciative of for your thoughtful, fair, and knowledgeable approach, and for keeping these meetings on track. I also want to make sure you know that my comments to follow are absolutely not directed at you. I wrote to the board back in December with my support of the proposed budget at the time and to express my concerns about further budget cuts. Normally, I wouldn't share my opinion again only a couple months later because it would feel redundant. However, a lot has transpired in recent meetings, and I would be remiss to not address my concerns and to make you keenly aware of one direct result that is likely to come from actions by some members of the board. Based on the 3-2 vote of the proposed operating budget at the last meeting, which we all know was against the recommendation by the FAC, and depending on the outcome of the votes on March 4th and 11th, my husband and I feel that we may have no other choice but to pull our daughter from the school that she is happy and prepared to come to every day, for an environment with a board where every member is there in the best interest of the students in the school, where there are not some members there to serve their own self-interests and the interests of their friends that take away from the best interests of the school, and where members are not bringing antiquated, ill-informed, and unlawful ideas of what an elementary school environment in 2025 should be. Our daughter has been a part of the school community since she was a newborn when her brother started kindergarten. In her two years as a student, she has thrived in the classroom as a peer and even as a test taker, because I know some people are fixated on that stat. Although contrary to Paul's false statement at the last meeting, my husband and I did not look at a single test score when we decided to move to Stratum for this school system seven years ago. It's a very difficult decision for us to choose to take her from this environment that she loves. However, we are no longer willing to leave her education in your hands. Our decision has nothing to do with the wonderful school administration, the teachers and support staff who we fully support and have nothing but admiration and respect for. It would have everything to do with the restrictions some members of this board are putting on the administration to limit their ability to fully operate in the best interest of SMS. So when the question continues to arise in years to come about why enrollment or test scores aren't higher, you can know for certain that at least one of those results is because the majority of the school board left us feeling that we have no other option but to leave. Thank you for hearing my comment.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? For now, we'll leave it open. I think we have 20 minutes remaining. Okay. Jill, if you wouldn't mind, I think that's a great question.
Can you restate the question, too, please?
So I was just wondering, based on the presentation of there's three assessments, right? And if those fall and winter are specifically in preparation for, because it sounds to me like the final assessment is the state portion one, right? So I'm just wondering, like, if the data is used for other things or if it's purely for that?
Great question. It's used for other things, right? So the whole point of an assessment system is to be able to adjust our teaching to meet students' needs. It would be not beneficial to use an assessment system that didn't correlate with that end-of-year one, though, right? And so it's nice to have something that is aligned to state standards that we can use during the fall and the winter that will align to the state assessment in the spring. But we absolutely use that data, and we use it with other measures, right? So not every student is a great test taker. So we don't put all our eggs in that basket, but we use it as one piece of data. So like, let's pretend the I-Ready that we do in the fall, right? We also take a look at classroom assessments, which can be paper-based, they can be a project, they can be a presentation, which are also aligned to our curriculum standards, which are aligned to the state standards, which are aligned to the end-of-year assessment. So we have I-Ready, we have classroom, and then we also have observations. And sometimes we even have a fourth piece of data. I'm looking out at teachers. If, I talk about data a lot, I talk about assessment opportunities a lot, but you want to have multiple ones so that then you can get a true picture of what the student knows and is able to do, and adjust your instruction from there. So for cohesion, yes, it helps support that end-of-the-year summative assessment, but we use it along the way to meet students where they are.
Thank you.
Yep.
Questions?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Sure. So, yeah, I agree with you that I think testing is probably one of the last things I look at as a parent. I would much rather my kid be happy going to school. I want them, I want to be able to reach my administrators and my teachers. I want them to have friends. There's so many other things I look for in terms of how my kids are doing at SMS. I think, I just have two questions for you. The first is, I'm sorry if I missed this, but did you say, like, for example, how many people opted out last year or the year before? Do we have a sense of that?
So I don't have the exact number of students, but the participation rate was like 98%, 99% in the three subject areas for Stratum.
And then, secondly, you know, I get the state testing report, and it tells me literally nothing. Does SMS have more information than I do as a parent, as like how she did in that state test?
Oh, on the report? No, nope. You have the same amount of information that schools receive.
Just having that conversation. We should just see what they wrote, right? You get a rating score. What'd she write?
Right.
You just get the same report you get.
And just so, if there's non-parents, you know, basically, it's a band. So I don't even know necessarily how my kid did. It's like a band score or something. It's pretty...
So what, I mean, we can use state testing as a way to, so we can look at it and see, are there certain domains, like in math, like geometry, numbers and operations? We can kind of see an overview like that, like how, where we have strengths, where we have weaknesses. But it's in June. It's the end of the year. As an administrator, we could look at that, but as a teacher, I would want to be using our in-class assessments, the I-Ready, the Akadience, the observations of students. That's going to help me change my instruction. That end-of-year summative is just like a quick, one-time. So, I mean, you have to be knowledgeable about what the assessment is and take that for what it's worth. Is that, am I answering that okay?
Uh huh. Thank you. Thanks.
Hi. I was just curious, what happens to schools that end up in that needs improvement category? So they, like, they receive extra support. Do you know what extra support looks like? Like, what does that mean?
Since I haven't gone through it, I did go to the state conference this year to learn about that, and I went to a session. From my understanding, it's a plan and setting goals of how you're going to make improvements, very similar to the way we already do business here, but it would probably have something to do with using other points of data along the year to make sure students are making progress, a detailed plan on professional development, and, you know, tracking data. So I'm thinking, I think it's more of a what are you going to do type of plan.
Yeah, like, super focused, like, on that school?
Yes. And then they monitor your growth through the years.
Gotcha.
Until you exit.
There was, there was a couple metrics in there, school quality and student success. What are those, like, tied to, like, individually? Like, how do you measure a school's quality? Is that those three, achievement, growth, equity, is that like school quality, or what makes that up?
Are you talking about the slide that said good standing?
That is what I'm referring to in terms of the metrics, but there was a point in your presentation, and I'm sorry, we don't have it in front of us, where you talked about, I believe, like, achievement, and then two other metrics, school quality and student success.
Student success will have to do with achievement scores, and then also the growth between students year to year and the demographic and subgroup growth. I don't know about school quality. I'd have to get back to you for that one.
Are we, this is kind of just like a general question. Are we going to receive, like, this presentation? Because you have the video in there, and you have, like, all this great information.
Yeah, I'd be happy to share it with you, I think. Is that okay?
We'll put it part of the minute, so it'll be for everyone to see.
Okay, thank you. And then...
I got a lot of the information on the state report card website called iPlatform.
Yes, I have been there. So I know those slides that show stuff and the ESA and all that. But all of your, like, other, these slides, like the bullets and things, I would love to see, have access to.
Yep.
And then I had another question that kind of came from something that Jennifer was talking about with the assessments, and the assessments throughout the year, and how the New Hampshire state assessment is very, like, broad and vague in terms of, like, what you receive as a parent. During the year, for the other assessments that Stratum does, what does the parent get for results of those? Do they see any results from that? Or is that kind of like an internal assessment that's happening, and then the parent only sees state assessment at the end? How does that get communicated to parents?
Can I, I'm not, I don't know the answer to that, like, how much is sent home? Can I...
Sent home regarding the state testing or the I-Ready testing?
Yeah, like, I-Ready and everything happening throughout the year?
So those go in students' cumulative folders and files upfront. So we have those. Some teachers make that a part of their parent conference conversations. Sometimes if a child's in child study team, we send home those results so parents can see the progress. It's not something we blast out and send home to everybody, but parents can have full access to those, and many do.
Okay. Right. That's all I have. Thank you.
We do send home best results. Our social emotional screeners, we send home those results to all families.
Okay.
Jill, I was just going to ask, on the, on creating those assessments, the statewide assessments, who does that? Who's, so I have a vague understanding of how that's done and who does it.
So the state contracts with a company called Cambium, and they develop the assessment. But also, they do review that with Cambium and do item analysis, and they just changed a little bit of the writing piece. So writing used to only be informational and opinion, and now they do narrative writing, and that's with input. They sometimes have focus groups from the state, and then they communicate that with the company that they contract with. And so I did try, I kind of anticipated some questions around that, and I was looking at what other states use for their state assessment. Like in Massachusetts, they use the MCAS. In Maine, I believe they used NWEA as their state assessment, so that's not my pay grade to decide what we use. But that's the Department of Ed. They decide, what are we going to use for our state assessment? And that has to meet the requirements of the federal government. So we use Cambium. And it's usually around, like, 40 questions, 50 questions for math. And for ELA, it is typically one question for writing, in which they read an article and they have to respond, or they see a picture and they respond. There is not, for the writing piece, it is around, like, a certain, there's not a time limit, but they do want a student just to kind of, like, have a free write, and not, it doesn't really match the writing process that we really try to have students be a part of during classroom instruction. So sometimes it's a little bit of a different experience for students. But it's, it's a piece of information, and we take that information seriously, but we match it with others as well.
Similar question. Proficiency, for them to figure out, because you've got level one, two, three, four, how do, who determines that? Is that something that's also through Cambium?
Yes, it is. And it's a scaled score. And they will push students to harder level questions because the scoring for SAS is a level one, two, three, or four. Four would be considered above grade level. So they do push students to higher level questions to see if they would fall into that level four scaled score. So that ELA, so you get ELA scaled score, that will fall into one, two, three, four. And you'll get a math for ELA. It's comprised of reading and then that writing assessment.
One more on that.
Yep.
So if they, does the state, I remember seeing, like, and I think I shared this with you, Chris, like, in 2015, they did something different to the test. I don't know if it was like a different provider, or they just changed the test, or whatever it was, but it seemed to throw everybody for a slight loop across the state. So I was just wondering, like, what's the, anything like that happening these days coming up? Like, how much notice do you get on changes? How much curriculum alignment does the state offer for guidance around that kind of thing?
So they, there's no changes predicted, like, not a new, we're not, they're not contracting with a new company. I think that one of the biggest changes we had was with our science. Science state assessment used to be more of a hands-on. They would mail something to the school, kids would do an experiment, you'd submit the results. But...
They changed the testing window last year, too.
And they changed the testing window for writing last year.
Up two months from...
Yes, but not this year. Yeah, yep. They changed the testing window for writing last year because they were going to use hand scoring, but still the same company. So there shouldn't be changes this year, and the testing window is April 1st to end of June.
I think that's what I had. The only other thing I just wanted to mention, I don't think we ever see, when we talk about testing results here, we don't ever really talk about that national scorecard number, I don't think, the one that is submitted. Usually what we're talking about is, like, raw aggregated state data that comes here. Is that, I mean, do you, am I right on that? You guys want to comment on that? Because I'm talking about at the board level, when we're presented with that information. I don't think I've ever seen that national readout before.
Yeah, we usually don't compare it against national.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to be apples to apples of what we, what we hear on the board versus what they, what's submitted for the federal.
We now take a look at, like, the I-Ready assessments for math and literacy. You can change this last column on the far right-hand side to align it with national norms, and that allows us to say, okay, they're in the 98th percentile nationally compared to all students in their grade. That really helps to paint a picture as well for things like cutoffs for enrichment, who's going to need to be in extended math for CMS. Are we, 80%, it's usually where you are for proficient, so are we mostly proficient? Are we toward that 80%? So we do align that last column now. I think we learned that through a training a little bit ago. But we are allowed to take the I-Ready scores now and align them nationally. And on day-to-days, we do.
Are you talking about the iPlatform as well? Like, that state report card? Is that what you're...
Yeah, I think so. Well, maybe. So I think on the iPlatform, I think they're taking, like, raw state data. I don't think they are, like, the denominator doesn't include zeros in that.
It does not include, no, it does. So the state report card that, on iPlatform, that includes zeros.
Is that the one that goes to the federal government?
Yep.
Okay. And it has to because it's going to the federal government?
Yes.
So if you were to take raw data, the denominator's regular in that raw data that you pulled down, it does not include zeros?
It doesn't, but that wouldn't affect, that's why I showed your participation rate, because that, your raw data for state assessment should be the same relative, like, very similar to what's on the state report card. Whereas in our smaller schools, if we look at the raw data, it can look a lot higher than what is on the state report card because they have a smaller number of students. They have one or two students opt out. That's going to count as a zero, and it's going to bring them lower on the state report card. But that is not the situation.
Here, right. Yeah, I think the, my understanding is the motivation behind that, which does create some complexity when you talk about how the state, the federal report card is, is I think they're trying to incentivize people to make sure that they do take that test and that there's some, like, norm across the nation. So I don't know if that's your understanding of it as well, to encourage test-taking, right? And not to reward with federal money under, underperformance or under test-taking, I guess, or something like that.
Yeah, I mean, if you're going to have your accountability system, achievement be a part of your accountability system, you want the most students to take it.
Exactly.
And I think that it's, you know, like I said, Stratum has a really high participation rate, which also means that all students are taking it, and that is, that could be students that, again, had just moved in. It could be students that are reading below grade level. It could be a whole variety of reasons. But we are having students participate in it, which is, I think, is, it's helpful for, as part of that assessment picture, it gives us a piece of that picture.
Yeah, can I just ask?
That's amazing to me. So all special ed kids and everybody takes it?
Yes, yes.
So every single kid is sitting down and taking 40 to 50 questions answered? Wow.
Breaks in gum.
Right.
Gum and breaks help. It's long.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Every student takes it and we have, we've got a lot of tips and tricks up our sleeves as teachers to help students just feel okay about it, like, you know, saying just try your best or here's a piece of gum. You know, all the things that we can do, but it's, again, it's one, it's one piece of information. And it's an important, it's an important piece. But we have other, it's very important, I believe this, and I expect all of our schools to do this, to have a balanced assessment system because if we are just basing how students perform off of one piece of data, that's not going to be a full picture. And so when we have professional development days where we say, teachers, this is your time to develop performance tasks or projects that are aligned to state standards, I truly believe that's the most valuable time for our professional learning, for our teachers to do that because it's part of the balanced assessment system. So Jennifer, as you were talking about, like it's one test. So if I have a student that didn't perform well on that one test, I better have other pieces of classroom data that show how the students are performing. And so we've got a very nice system, especially in Stratum, to allow for that. And I, I am grateful to the administrative team that they are making time for that work because I always frame it in, if you're going to have a conversation with a caregiver, what are the pieces of data you're going to have to talk about what they know? If it's just, if you just have, if you just have one thing, that's going to be tricky to get a picture of the whole student.
Eric and Jennifer, can I ask Jill just for two minutes? There was a question last time about best practices and what do we do in Stratum compared to our other schools? And you saw the iReady, that all of our SAU 16s are well above the state average and are well above the national average for norming. But Jill, can you just spend like two minutes talking about, I know your calendar, you've got about eight meetings a month where you're working with different cohort groups on specific competencies or reviewing what we do in regards to curriculum instruction? Can you just give a quick overview of what you're doing, how we're participating in that and what that looks like?
Yes.
Thank you.
So like how I spend a lot of my time?
Yeah.
Okay. State assessment, state standards, right? I keep saying that. That's that thing that happens in June. Everything else has to build up to that. So all of our content that we have, math, reading, writing, science, social studies, they have to be aligned to some standard. And it has to kind of follow a trajectory to the end of the year, but also the year after that, after that, 12th grade to beyond. And so I meet with all of our content areas on a cycle. So this year I'm meeting with five different ones, I believe, to make sure that the curriculum that we use and the standards we use are the most up to date and there's a vertical alignment between the grade levels. So for example, we did that this year with reading. We looked at every single standard that went with every competency from kindergarten all the way to 12th grade. We then talked about the most important standards within ELA. We started with reading literature and said, what are the essentials that we need every kid to know in kindergarten first all the way to 12th grade? And that was a very interesting conversation because, did you know that starting in kindergarten, the work that we do with character and setting and main idea is a common thread all the way to 12th grade? And we can talk about from our teacher, as teachers, what does that look like as a demonstration of mastery throughout the years? And so we do that with every subject area.
Is that, is that new?
Well, we started it when I was doing it about five years ago and Jill's taken and she's really, she's dug into it much more than I had the ability to do. So when I first started, we didn't have those vertical alignments that were meeting as regularly as we did and she's built it out even more. So we, the question is, are we having common conversations? And yes, we are. We're sharing best practices, what's working well, what's not. So I just wanted to highlight, she's dug into it much more than I ever could or would. She's awesome at it, but I just wanted that question to be answered, that we are looking, you know, system-wide of what we're doing.
Yes.
Sophie, are you?
Hi.
Are you concerned with the scores at SMS? If so, why? If not, why not?
I'm not concerned with the scores at SMS because of the systems that I see in place at SMS. And so if we didn't have a system in place to see if students were making growth along the way, I would be concerned. Not because of, oh my gosh, I can't believe this is how we look, but because, ooh, how do we, how do we help the students if they're struggling, if they're having, if they're missing skills? But because of the systems we have in place here where we have data teams, where we talk about what students know and are able to do, I know students aren't being left behind. That's what I'm most concerned about. So I can go to a school and I can see that they're 80% proficient, but if they don't have systems in place to talk about that throughout the year, I really don't care because that means there could be 20% of students that aren't being talked about or supported throughout the year. And so as a board, I would ask at the beginning of the year, what does your schedule look like? When are you, when are you going to have teacher teams sit and talk about what, what students need more support? What students need extension? What are we doing to continue our curriculum? Like those are the questions to ask because that's what you want to see throughout the school year. That proficiency score at the end of the year means nothing if you're not doing any of that work. So that's why I'm not concerned about it. Thank you for asking.
And it's, I think we do good, we do a good job of getting the readouts on that and speaking about that regularly throughout the year.
And also, I do look at, I do look at the scores. And I, and we notice trends within our, especially like, okay, I'll dig into our end-of-the-year math fifth-grade scores and say, wow, within the different domains of math, we might be struggling in one area, like algebra and functions. And I'll say, okay, why is that happening? Well, guess what? That's not taught until the last unit. Okay, that's, we can fix that. We can change our instruction to maybe sprinkle that in a little bit more or enhance some of those lessons. And so if you're not digging into that, you're not going to be able to make curriculum adjustments to meet those needs. And so if it was concerning, we would address it, absolutely.
Chris, isn't that what we heard when we had the presentation on the assessment? Was that that's some of the things that?
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Those like low-hanging fruit to be able to improve scores was just moving things around.
Curriculum-wise, what we're teaching, what we're teaching, but that's the work that we've been doing together as a group, really digging into it, yeah. And then having the MTSS coordinator here, meeting with all the teams has been how we continue to look at who are improving, you know, student growth.
And yeah. Some of the other data pieces we look at besides achievement will be like, and I don't know the numbers here for Stratum, but absences, that's something we're looking at in a lot of schools, right? If students, the absent rate can really mean missing chunks of instruction. And so sometimes it's not even a curriculum piece we're focusing on. It's how do we get students to come to school? Because they're still going to be expected because we care about them, number one. But also they're still, they still do take that test at the end of the year. So that's, that's, when we talk about data, it's not just the achievement scores. It's also if there's something else that's very concerning, we might have to address that first.
Can I ask two more on that?
Yeah.
One, is it, is it worthwhile for us, like, so ADM would be a comparison? That, that would capture some of the absence relative to like enrollment, right?
Uh huh.
We could understand that as well. Is that something that, that you guys track on a?
Daily basis.
Okay. And it's something that could be reported out monthly, like at a board meeting?
Yeah, we can report out ADM every single day or we could do it at a monthly board meeting as well.
That'd be interesting to know, just to see how many kids are, we got enrollment, but then we've also got our kids showing up.
And, and that would be something that the MTSS coordinator would keep track of, keeps track of too, right? So that might not be a stat that we need to talk about because it might not be something that is needed addressing. But maybe it is, I don't know.
I got one last one, I promise.
It's all right, Eric.
Like in a Venn diagram, when you got the curriculum piece and then you've got the testing piece, does the testing pretty much fit inside what we always do for curriculum? Or is there like a piece that you have to prepare for, for the state assessment that's just outside of what we think is the right educational plan to put in front of the kids?
There's a small piece. Yeah, yeah. Like understanding the platform that you're going to, you're going to interact with. Is that what you mean? So, yes, okay, so.
Or even just instructional stuff?
Yeah, the instruction and curriculum are aligned to state standards which the test takes.
Yes.
They are all, if you get through all of your curriculum, the test is built off of those standards.
Yes, yes. And then.
By grade level.
Okay.
I usually recommend like.
Wouldn't teach if you weren't being assessed at the state.
Or something you'd rather teach, but you got to teach this thing.
Well, and if you look at the number of standards and the number of days of school, it's like nearly impossible to fit everything in. So you do a lot of like cross-curricular work. Where can we integrate this and be doing some writing while we're also studying history, right? So you're doing a lot of this constantly. That's a lot of the craft work that goes behind the scenes to make that all fit as best you can. And that goes perfectly if no one has any gaps when they get to you.
Yes, exactly. And then I thought you meant like the platform of taking the test. I mean, it does, the platform, like the actual test that students take, it can really be tricky, but I don't recommend us like teaching to the test. But it might be worth like a half hour working with students and saying, this is where you click. This is the next button because it's just not something that they're familiar with. But it's certainly not a big chunk of instruction time. I would rather us spend time on the curriculum.
We're spending time in PLCs right now, looking at, the, the state puts out sample questions. So we're looking at those. We're also looking at student samples that have been released that are a 10 in writing, a seven in writing. What do those look like? And then allowing students to try that prompt writing like you were talking about. A lot of the writing we do is process writing. How do you create a narrative? Create your characters and you can make a little story map. And then, and we want to teach kids to do that, to be creative and write. But this assessment is like prompt assessment. So it's like, okay, there's a field day and you fall. And then Billy's at a field day, he's so excited to be there. And at the beginning of the race, he falls. Write the rest of the story. And you're like, duh! You know, the kids are like trying to write this little prompt and they're not really able to do. They can do some other planning and we talk about that, but it just feels a little bit different, right? So we're trying to give them those exact opportunities to say, this is prompt writing. This is, you know, this is what the test looks like. Click on it and play with those tools. And the highlighters now, get it out of your system because those are not meant to distract you later. So those are more things we're doing this year than we have before.
Yes.
Can be tricky when you're not, you know, mouse pads for seven-year-olds, eight-year-olds.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Jill.
You can reach out anytime.
Thanks so much, Jill. And public comment ended a few minutes ago. I don't know if anybody heard it, so. Public comment time period ended. I think the next thing on the agenda was board reports, all right? Yes, building committee? Paul, Sophie?
I have nothing to report. If you want to report on the outreach.
Sure. So we had six presentations lined up in anticipation of the March 4th vote for the bond for the renovation. They're going well. We've had two so far. The next one is this Saturday, 9:00 AM here. We'll actually be here in the learning commons instead of the cafeteria. We really hope, especially parents, will show up to that one. They're going well. The main concern that people have had are about the windows and folding those in. So we're, yeah, I think that that's being addressed. If we have money left over, which we hope to have, then we will address the windows and have a plan to address those as we go. But that's really been the main, really only concern. They've been low in attendance, I think, because we've done so much due diligence before these presentations. So it doesn't seem like the bond is extremely controversial, in my opinion. So folks who show up are most, they have some questions, but it seems like it's not a super hot button issue right now, so.
I just want to add one observation. In the, in the first outreach, there was a group of individuals there that had been involved in the renovation of CMS. Very, very experienced group of ladies. And they had a lot of very good, very pointed questions and concerns. And I, I think we did a good job, you know, addressing those concerns and answering the questions to their satisfaction.
Yeah, I would agree. Yeah, so there are four more and those are on the SMS website for folks to attend.
I noticed that they were featuring different people. And could you explain that? Because I didn't know how to answer that question when I was asked.
Yeah, and that there are different members of the subcommittee. So in the subcommittee, we had a group of experts come together. And then I assigned each subcommittee member one of the presentations.
Do they have kind of a different angle on it based on their own perspective?
Yeah, every subcommittee member will just give kind of a five-minute intro in the beginning of their perspective on it, why they joined the subcommittee, why they think it's important, why they think it's a good idea. And I wanted their names on the flyer so that if people said, oh, I know that person, they may be encouraged to join that one.
Yeah, and just a note, you've done amazing. It's so well done and you, like, you're so smooth how you run them and, yeah, amazing job.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on the building committee? Superintendent Evaluation Committee, did you guys meet?
No update since, you guys heard the joint board update, so nothing else.
Safety and security?
Yeah, no update for me. There's supposed to be a meeting tomorrow morning, but that got pushed because of weather. So it's actually happening in late March now, March 20th.
Got it. Communications and community engagement, Sophie, any?
Yeah, same, really just focused on the building. And I did make a flyer specifically to get, I sent it to Kate Lucas to hopefully get in kids' backpacks to reminding parents to come on March 4th. So I just sent her that today.
Chair, update, anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I just wanted to congratulate SMS on the student showcase. That was really impressive. There were so many people here. I would love if board members kind of came to those in the future because it's just like, there's so much energy. Everybody's just moving all around. There's such good conversations. There's presentations in the, you know, in the cafeteria and all the students are doing their own things in their classrooms. And, you know, everybody had, like, I would see a kid with like a group of family members, right? It's just a really, the kid is so proud and the building is just like alive with people. So anyway, thank you for a great job at that student showcase. And I know I saw members of the community too who don't even have kids here because you guys were doing a lot of stuff on Martin Luther King. So that was great. I also just wanted to talk about snow days just for one quick second because I know we always talk about snow days as like, go have fun and, you know, what a great time for your kid. I think snow days are really tough for parents where both parents are working. And so I just wanted to acknowledge that contingency of the populace. You know, like, of course, I would love to be sledding out with my kid and making hot chocolate, but I'm also on 12 Zooms that day. And so, you know, I just wanted to like, just kind of say that as well. Snow days, snow days are tricky. Fun, but tricky. And then, let's see, I just wanted to say I've also gotten just a ton of emails about, you know, the, the budget vote from last month. And I'm definitely reading them and seeing them and, you know, appreciating all the feedback on, on the budget and, and just hoping everybody comes March 4th. That's it for me.
Great, thank you.
Can I add something? March 4th, as a reminder for folks here and in the audience, is the vote for not only the budget, but also the bond for the building renovation. So both things.
And the.
And the warrant.
Well, the warrants are on the next week. But I did want to just ask because I see here you have 10,000 for special ed and I thought we had said nothing in the special ed warrant. Is that true? When I look at the minutes.
I thought we had hit the number that we.
Exactly. So we're going to keep it, so we're going to zero that out.
Okay, I can adjust that.
Okay. Do you need to do that before we sign it?
If you want to sign the copy, I'm just going to adjust the wording in the back.
Okay, okay, sounds great.
And then I was also just going to add, because last year the FAC didn't recommend the recommendations, when we pulled forward the wording, I'm just going to add that the FAC recommended all of the warrant articles as well.
Okay. And do we say anything about the FAC with the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? Jennifer, when you mentioned like the board coming to events, do you just keep track? Because obviously we have kids in school. Do you just keep track of the school calendar for that? Because I'm, like, I don't, I don't see any invitations to the board coming through. Is that something that we should just be like checking the calendar for or?
Yeah, I think, I, I know you guys used to do a SMS admin report where you would talk about events or something. I don't know if that ever can be part of the board agendas again. That was always my favorite part of the board agendas. But yeah, how else would, do community members hear about events?
Kate sends out the newsletter.
Yeah.
That's our main way of advertising.
Do board members get that, then SMS newsletter?
Oh, the smores? Send you the smores? Send you the S'mores? They're nicely, they're full of pictures, they're fun. We can send the S'mores to you if that's helpful.
Yeah, yeah, they have events on there, something that I can reference.
All flyers and dates and things like that are there.
Well, now they're Parents Square, right?
Yeah, yes, they come through Parents Square. We could, we have them digitally here, we could just send a link to you when we send that out.
Yeah. Because then they, always at the bottom, they have a big long thing.
Are there any events that are like inappropriate for the board to kind of be at? Are there like really like more like incentive for like parents or things like that going on that like?
No.
Okay, all right, it's open, free for all, come on, okay.
Yeah, and I know the showcase was really communicated all around town because the town coordinated the Martin Luther King events. So like the church was doing stuff, the library was doing stuff, the school was doing stuff.
Yeah.
One thing I found helpful, because I'm in my calendar all the time with work, is they have a, there's a, like an iCal, there's like a public Google Calendar that you can subscribe to.
Yeah.
And you can overlay that right onto your work calendar. So I'll try to...
Through the SAU website?
Yes, I'll try to find that because I find that to be the most helpful thing. I can see everything that's going on all the time. So there's stuff that you wouldn't even, that you might not even think of doing, but like cross-country for the girls or something. Like you'll see that that's going on at the school, so. I'll try to, I'll send it to you, but it'd be great if we could put it out there somehow for like working professionals, sometimes that might be helpful. For in their calendar.
Is that what all the institutions in Stratum contribute to?
I don't know, all institutions, what, how you mean?
Well, like the town, town halls, the school, the library.
To be able to get all of their stuff?
Are all those dates on iCal?
I don't know. It's just, it's just our school that I know, yeah. But that would be kind of cool, actually, if we had like a town master calendar that you could subscribe to, yeah.
No, thank you.
All right, anything else on the, from the chair?
Nothing.
All right, strategic planning, Sophie, anything?
Uh, no.
Did already do that? No, I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, no update.
I did, sorry, just to comment on that. Did you guys take that? It was intense.
Yeah, I took it, but I don't have kids in the school, so I got like sidetracked into a different...
Okay.
I funneled into that category.
Because, yeah, I just, I don't know if anybody else found it, but the questions were like, does your kid work hard, you know? But then it's like, well, does my kid work hard because she goes to SMS? Or does she work hard because?
Yeah.
It was, I was confused by it. I actually did not finish it. But yeah, I don't know. Are you getting good results?
I don't know.
Okay.
We meet next Thursday, look at the results. So we'll be able to share that and then be able to get communication out in March.
Okay.
Anything else? Policy committee did not meet. I think there's gonna be a lot coming up, though. I mean, I'm just seeing all sorts of stuff. We got all, like Title IX, we got all this stuff that's coming. So it'll be interesting, whatever the next meeting is. I'll be looking forward to giving an update. Old business, we don't have anything listed here?
Just gonna give two quick updates. So we met with one vendor last Monday. It was Sophie, myself, Principal Lucas and Arthur, who are director of facilities here. CMA engineers was here to go over the bids for the PFA project. So we invited three vendors, only one showed up. So they were given a timeline. Paul, you're off the hook for tomorrow. The bids are not in, so have your...
I was just gonna ask you, it was supposed to be 4 o'clock?
Nope, you're off, so you can have a happy Valentine's Day dinner. The bids got shifted a week, so, and they are gonna be sent to the schools so we can actually do it properly virtually. We don't even need to meet in person on that, so I'll update you once we get that. But all bids are due on the 21st, so it's the day right before vacation at 4 o'clock. They're gonna be submitted to Principal Lucas or dropped off here in the school and then we can open it up. Because it is a federal grant, it does have to go to the lowest quality bid. So not the lowest score, but the lowest quality bid. And CMA will have a quality criteria that...
And you need a, you need a board member there present, is that right? No?
You don't need to either, nope. So we went through, it was always helpful to have a board member. That's why it was really helpful to have Sophie there, just so that we understand the process since we're getting questions about our drinking water and what we're doing. But that, we will have that wrapped up with the timeline by the end of the year. So we're looking really well with that, so I just wanted to give that update.
Wait, Chris, you said lowest quality, don't you mean qualified?
Excuse me, qualified, yeah.
Great.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a little bit of a oxymoron, correct? Thank you. The other thing I just wanted to update you on, and I'm gonna pass this out. Jennifer, myself, David Emanuel and Principal Lucas met last week, last Thursday actually, during the snow day, to review just our March meeting. One thing David asked is to really have an organized approach to how we would look at it so that we could be as efficient with our time and go through. So what's been really helpful in either other deliberatives that we've already conducted in SAU 16 is to put together kind of a timeline and agenda. So this, we kind of used as a format that we use with the cooperative. And so you'll see that, you know, David's gonna call the meeting to order. We'll do pledge of allegiance. David will introduce or have Jennifer introduce the school board members and the same with the FAC. Then David will read each warrant article. What he's asking is that, you know, who's going to speak about those warrant articles and make motions? So we try to strategically, you know, put different members. So every member from the board is active during our annual meeting. So, and the first warrant is our building bond. It has to be by law that your bond is heard first. So we asked that Paul would make the motion to accept the building bond, which is Article 1, as presented, and we'd ask Sophie to second that. So that way we can have conversation with the community. Once that conversation goes and that we get to where either the supported or it's amended, because those are the two things, we take a vote and, you know, if it's over 60%, that will pass. And the last part is we'd ask for a motion, and that's why you see a restrict for reconsideration. As you know, in annual meetings, only the people there that can vote. So you don't want to have something pass one way or the other and then have half of your attendance leave and then have someone be, make a motion to change that, which would be ill-intent. So that's why there's that restrict for reconsideration that would go through so that it's the people and it's the body that are voting on that. So that's very common. So just wanted you to have that outline. And if you're comfortable with it, we felt that it was, again, it just mentions it, it's very factual. And it also includes all the board throughout the meeting. And it gives David, which he was asking for, an agenda that he can follow so he can stay on task, because we do anticipate it to be a very well-attended meeting. Any questions on that?
The only thing, I think too, Chris, you said that you, you folks will produce some of these slides in advance and submit them to the board for feedback?
Yep, so, over February break, I'm gonna work with Jennifer to get some slides together. So we're gonna talk about the budget. And we'll go through our warrants, kind of where they're at and why those are necessary. We'd ask to get input from both Paul and Sophie on the building. I think there's a ton there, so we'll compile that so that we have it and so we can get it to the board hopefully by the end of next February. So that's, that's my goal, to work with you all, to get that up and have everyone take a look at it. Any questions? Everyone comfortable of where they're slotted and what we're asking for input from the board? Thank you.
Thanks for putting it together.
Just follow this, right? Anything, any other old business? New business? Paul, length of board meeting?
Thank you.
I did have an old business. Well, we haven't determined the length of time for the bond yet. I don't know if we need to do that tonight or we can do it in March too, but we haven't voted on the number of years.
When do we need to vote on bond length? By?
Oh, we don't have to do that until after it's approved, right?
Right, so in, so in the language, you'll see the warrant article, it says that the vote gives you the opportunity to enter negotiations for the term length. So it's not until we actually go to bond it.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And so the warrant article grants you the authority, once it's passed, to negotiate those.
Gotcha. You're right, though, Sophie, it does say that in the minutes.
Yeah.
It should be February, okay.
All settled on that?
Yep.
New business, length of board meetings?
Yeah, thank you. So in January, we had two very long board meetings. I think the one on the 8th went until about 10:30 or so. I remember getting in the truck and it was like 20 of 11 or something like that. Kate had to give a presentation that I think started about 9:30 or so. I remember talking to Kate just before the meeting started and she told me that she had been here at the school since 3:30 AM that morning. You know, I personally had been in all-day meetings myself. So I just think it was unfair to ask Kate to give a detailed presentation on iReady at that time of night. And I think Raymond had to give a presentation after that, completely unfair. And if the truth be told, okay, I didn't get a lot out of it. I was tired, okay? And I would like to see it again, you know, when I'm fresh. So I'd like to see that the, that board meetings be limited to three hours maximum. And if there's more business that needs to be done, then we schedule another meeting. Or schedule it earlier if it looks like it's gonna go, clearly if it looks like it's gonna go longer than three hours, so start it at 5:00. I don't have a ready solution for it, but, but going that long when some people have had a long day like that, I just think that was terribly unfair to Kate and to Raymond. So I'd like to make a motion that we limit the board meetings to three hours max.
Sorry, looking for a second on that? Going once, going twice, going three times. Would another solution, Paul, be to, just because we didn't get the second, to, we could, we could make a motion to adjourn a meeting and, at any time, and have a vote of the board to adjourn and reschedule something that was on the docket or on the agenda? Have you ever seen that happen?
I mean, yeah, when you start getting towards midnight, I've been part of that, where it's adjourned and it's picked up. It's just another night out and you're having to have someone from the business office there. If it's a financial, it's also multiple schedules where we have multiple boards or you're keeping our administration out another night. So it's however you want it. And another option is that you could put time limits on each one of your segments based by themes. Or if you realize that at a board meeting, we've got a lot to go and you want to hear board presentations, we could work as we've done in the past. Can we move things up? I think you're putting a limit because you have to have at least 30 minutes of public comment. And if that goes longer, I don't know if you want to limit, you know, when people are having conversations at your board meeting or giving you information. But that's up to you. So I think, you know, none of us want to be here till 10 o'clock at night. But there's also a lot of business that sometimes we have to get to and there's, there's hot topics that we have to discuss. And I think this board has given everybody the ability to speak about those. So it's, it's the will of what you'd want to do.
Yeah, I definitely hear what you're saying. And yeah, I do agree. I mean, yeah, I think one of the things we have thought about doing and we have done is changing the order of the agenda. You know, so for example, committee reports or something could be at the end. And I think sometimes that can be helpful.
Yeah, well, so that's, that's a kind of a happy medium. I'd like to see, the effort that the administration put into readying those PowerPoint presentations was significant. And it's just, I think it's just terribly unfair to ask them to make those presentations, you know, late at night.
Yeah, I mean, I think they still served a great purpose. I know a lot of people watch the stream and, and review the presentations. But I hear what you're saying.
Yeah, and then just to kind of comment on it, kind of, you know, going to another meeting a separate night, for me, you know, requires childcare both nights for that. And it's almost easier for me to stay longer and kind of just keep that, you know, center with my kids. They're kind of expecting that like at this point. So I think going to another night is not super ideal for myself personally. And then additionally, moving a little bit earlier is also rough because I do work until 5:00, so kind of getting here at that point in time. So I think to Jennifer's point, if we can find some kind of efficiencies in the, in the agenda, that's probably the best solution.
Sophie? Yeah, if it's a long, if we know it's gonna be a long meeting, if there's a long agenda, we could also try and do more pre-reading if there's things that we can read ahead of time to speed up the amount of time that we're talking at the meeting. That would be great, like board reports, maybe those can be emailed out ahead of time so that we can just review them in our board packet instead of having to spend five or 10 minutes talking about it.
How far in advance do you think we have the agendas usually nailed down?
It's usually like 10 days.
Yeah, we always, I always try to get it to at least a week in advance. You have plenty of time to review it. We're usually good nine days in advance of hammering that out. And then I do final touches to get it out within that, that week.
Similar to tonight, and I can't remember, sorry, I can't remember for the, the data presentations that Kate and Raymond did. Were those in the board packets?
They were not in the board packets. They were part of the minutes so that we can put them up on after.
Is it possible to get, I mean, I realize that kind of puts like a, a time box on like anybody presenting to get that in. But is there any way we can get any of that in advance?
Can always try to get it in advance. I know there is, sometimes I am leaving this building at 11 o'clock and they're still working on it.
Yeah.
And then we come back here for 6:00. So I can't speak for them because they are, as soon as they think they have a free minute and they're going to a classroom to assist or there's a fire drill.
Yeah.
So I think they try all capacity to get it done as soon as possible. They are, they're trying to polish it up to be as proficient as possible.
Okay.
I think having an estimate going in is a, is a helpful thing. I mean, sometimes we get here and we're like, this is gonna be a long one. But if we knew it a few days in advance, like, we could organize, maybe through, through Chris, how to move things around so that we...
Yeah, when Jennifer and me, we can look at it and we think it's a long one. We can try to prioritize ahead of time and let you know that we're shifting things around to get people that are presenting in, out, and then maybe leave our board reports and committees at the end where that, that's us and it's not relying on other people to present.[1701.14]